September, September, October 18th, 2022. I call to order the Joint Utilities and Technology and Special Call Committee of the whole meeting. The time is now 2:04. We have present members of the committee, Dr. O'Quinn and myself, and I thank all of you for joining us today. Dr. O'Quinn, hope you've had an opportunity to read the minutes from the meeting of October 16th, 2022. If I could have a motion?
Motion approved.
Second, if there are any questions, all those in favor of approval of those minutes, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. And so those minutes of August 16th, 2022 are approved. We don't have any new business today, but I do thank each of you for joining us as a part of old business, which would be a status of ongoing projects by each of our utilities or technology groups that are here represented. So we thank you all for bringing information to us today. And we'll just go ahead and go right into the ongoing projects. And I will just call you by orders listed on the agenda. So we have Mr. Julian Grant with Alabama Power. Mr. Grant, thank you.
Good afternoon, everyone.
Afternoon.
Definitely happy to be here with you all. So very brief update, as you all know, we've been working with the Parks and Rec Division on many of the parks throughout the city of Birmingham and upgrading the lighting infrastructure there. So as of right now, we have provided quotes for four of those parks, and I'll go ahead and list those for you. Those are Rushton Roads, Caldwell, Lowry, Wyllam, Rotary Trail, and East Pinson Valley. Also, we've looked at Eastlake Park and Woodward Park. So we've provided those numbers, and I can provide a list of those parks to you all if that would be helpful. We provided the quotes. Some of them are formal contracts to the Parks and Rec Board. So Director Shanae, as well as Mr. Charles Brenner, they've been a pleasure to work with throughout this process. I believe that the last time they spoke, that we spoke with them, they stated they were working with some of the council members in terms of budgeting and how they would appropriate some of the funds to pay for the upgrades. So that's where we are as of right now. As soon as you all say, go ahead and pull the trigger, we'll be sure to get those materials ordered so that we can upgrade the infrastructure at the parks.
Thank you for bringing this information. Dr. O'Quinn, did you have any questions or need follow-up?
All right, Alabama Power, you know, can you talk a little bit about the highway lighting project?
You said the highway lighting?
Yes.
So that would be out of our lighting services. I don't have any updates at the moment for that project, but I can certainly point you and get you in touch with Terrence so that he can provide that update.
I did have one follow-up question, and thank you for bringing us the update on the project. Just two things I wanted to ask you about. When it comes to any upgrades, could you give the residents just a little more information about what entails in that upgrade if those parks and if that project goes through? When we talk about upgrade, is it the types of lights or the quantity of lights that would be in that particular park?
Oh, definitely. Happy to provide an update. So essentially, what it looks like, at some of the parks, there will be a one-for-one retrofit or one-for-one conversion. So that means where you may have had an older fixture there, we would just replace that with a newer LED fixture. So it would provide brighter light. It would cast out and have a better showing, a coverage area for you all at that park. From the ones that we've seen so far, we've looked at not only just the site lighting. So if you're walking along a trail at a park, we've looked at that, but we've also looked at the athletic field lighting as well. Because, for instance, at Eastlake Park, you have the football fields, you have where the swimming pool is located. And so we've gone out and we've also provided numbers on what it will look like to upgrade that lighting so that it would be more so of a uniform look throughout the whole park. But we're excited because from the ones that we've already completed in certain neighborhoods, you can just see that the residents feel safer going out and being in the parks as well as when they have kids, football games, things of that nature. They're able to practice appropriately and don't have to end early just because it's getting dark outside. So we look forward to continuing the partnership with the city.
Thank you so much. I do have just one item that I did want to bring to your attention, and that is, we do have certain residents within certain areas, they want to ask about the vegetation crews or the crews that may come out, especially when there are limbs or there are low-hanging trees that they feel that may be hanging over power lines. And I know sometimes the question comes, is it a power line or is it a phone line?
Right.
Or is it another type? So could you just tell citizens again, is there a number they should call or how should they contact Alabama Power? They have a concern that they may need a vegetation crew to come out and look at those type situations.
So one of the ways it's been very helpful to us is if you all, well, if residents go through their council member and then they, then through you all, you all send that to us. It just helps for keep track of those requests. And then, once we get back to that resident, of course, it just enables us to keep that rolling log. But as it relates to whether it's phone line or Alabama Power, that's something that really we just have to place eyes on.
Okay.
You know, essentially, if they say it's on a, we just went out and looked at one recently. And so when we went out there, yes, we're on one side of the road and the phone company's on the other side, but we definitely just want to do what's right by the customer and make it so that the infrastructure is not being tampered with. We want to make sure that you're not seeing blinks. So if we do look up there, and I'll add this, when a resident is looking up at a power line and they say, yes, we have these tree limbs that are just all over the lines, they may see it as one thing. Our vegetation management crews, they have a certain way that they can identify and criteria that they have to go by to say, yes, it's time for us to cut that limb. So of course, sometimes there is a little disagreement there, but we always try to help the customers out the best that we can.
Well, thank you very much. We appreciate this update. And so hopefully residents will take heed to those instructions and we'll be happy to entertain those calls. And then councils can also send those through my office and then we'll get those in contact with the Alabama Power. Thank you so much.
That's perfect.
Thank you. Next up is Birmingham Water Works, Mr. Rick Jackson. Hello, how are you?
Doing well. Good afternoon, how's everybody?
Good afternoon.
Just a couple of things I want to say. We are proud to say that, you know, well, I know you've probably seen a lot going on in the media lately as it concerns Birmingham Water Works. We are really happy to say that we are in a good position when it comes to our billing issues that we have been dealing with, and we'll have a plan to communicate that to our customers next week. More importantly, we are in our budget season. You may have also saw reports to where the board is considering an 8.3% rate increase. I want to say that was very preliminary and very premature to say that. The board has presented with several scenarios, and that decision has not been made. They're going to actually enter into their second workshop, budget workshop tomorrow. And then we are inviting the public out to the public hearing, which is November 9th at 5:30 PM at our headquarters. But until then, the board is working with the executive staff to come up with what they see as a good budget to properly operate a utility that may or may not include a rate increase. So along the way, we, all of our meetings are public, and so we invite the public to participate, even via phone, to see what our budget journey entails. And the board will make a public presentation to the public on the 9th. Trying to see anything else that we have going on. Really, those are the things. Again, we really appreciate the patience of our customers. We've been really trying to make really good faith efforts to address all customer concerns, all outstanding customer concerns that we've had. We have brought on a new public relations firm. We're very excited about that. And they have a very robust plan, a very aggressive plan, to make sure that our customers are being properly communicated with. And so that's where we are right now. I'll address any questions you may have.
Thank you. Dr. O'Quinn?
I think everyone's definitely interested in, you know, the potential rate increases. So glad to hear that the November 9th meeting, is that, can you, do you have a time and location for that?
Yes, that is at 5:30 PM at our headquarters administrative building, 3600 First Avenue North.
Okay.
And at that time, the public will see a more finalized version of what is being proposed as a budget and potential rate increase. But until that time, the board is constantly still going through workshops right now. And so they haven't determined anything. There have been several scenarios of what a rate increase would like and certain percentages, but nothing has been determined as of now.
Okay. And as I understand it, the proposed rate increases would really kind of depend on your geography. Is that correct?
No, the rate increase would be across the board if there was a rate increase. What we do and we have is a lifeline rate. And the lifeline rate pretty much would address our low-usage customers. When I say low usage, we have a three-tier billing system where you are billed at the first three cubic feet at one rate, then for the 12 at another rate, and then anything after that at another rate. And so with the lifeline rate, with the low-end usage customers, they're paying on a lesser fee because you're looking at customers who are maybe senior citizens or maybe single-parent households. And so basically, the tier system is set up to help us conserve water and also create some type of equity when it comes to our customers. But as far as if there is a rate increase, all customers will have to pay that same rate increase. I want to also put out there that Jefferson County Sewer, who we bill for, they just had implemented their rate increase on October 1st. And so we have been getting a lot of calls from customers asking why their water bill has gone up. And truly, it's the sewer portion of your water bill that's gone up. And so our board understands that, our executive management understands that they, our customers, many of them, a lot of our customers are in Jefferson County, we service five counties. But we understand that a lot of customers are dealing with that rate increase when considering going into what we may or may not have to do for fiscal year 2023. So I did want to put that part out there as well.
Follow-up question. So as part of Birmingham Water Works strategic plan, are, is the Water Works thinking about how to implement automated metering?
Absolutely. Yes, you know, that's been a hot topic, Councilor O'Quinn. Right now, what is happening is we are trying to, and I want to say this, this is a very robust process. So right now, in the beginning stages of that, what our staff is doing is engaging with getting consultation on how that would be implemented. And so that's pretty much step one. And that's where we are, trying to get a group to come in and consult us on what the steps may be. But yes, that has been a part of our strategic plan. The board is very adamant about us moving towards some type of solution. Our executive management has put it out there as well, and our customers, they've had a lot of input on that. And so automated meter reading is something that we are definitely looking into. It is a very expensive undertaking, I will say that. And so just trying to figure out how to strategically make that work and also being a benefit of the customers' dollars is all a part of that plan. But yes, they are very aggressive at this point and moving towards seeing what we can do with AMI.
Thank you. I just wanted to, if you will, just speak just a few minutes on the new version of the water bill and how that looks. I know when you open your bill and you see something new, just any feedback you've received from customers or anything that you could help to just navigate us with the new bill and what you all wanted to accomplish with that?
I am so happy you brought that up. I'm sorry for not mentioning it.
It's okay.
Yes. September, we debuted our new bill design, and we're very excited about that. We've been working on that for a couple of years, and it just so happened that it came into place at this time, which was very needed. The new bill design pretty much says, you know, what we wanted it to do is a fresh new look, fresh layout. We wanted this to be a more prominent Birmingham Water Works bill. As you know, we bill for several sewer agencies as well, but we wanted our customers to clearly see what their usage was, so they can go back and see what I used in water a year ago today, and it's clear and defined. So we've done that. We made the message center to where we sent out a monthly message to our customers. We made that more prominent so customers can see. And what's new about that is that we've added a billing data usage page. And that third page will give customers everything that they owe, however many months it may be, what credit we are putting on the account, anything that they paid, which solves the issue of what we had with customers receiving multiple bills or customers not receiving their bills. And so that problem has been eliminated. So I'm happy to say right now that no customer should be receiving multiple bills after this new bill design has hit, which we're two months in. We did surveys with the customers on what they thought it, you know, how it was going. And we got a lot of positive feedback. I hadn't really, honestly, I hadn't had any negative feedback from the new bill design, and that's very promising. So the main thing dealing with currently, what we're dealing with, with the issues of multiple billing, that has been resolved with this new bill design. It doesn't matter if you owe one month, six months, it's all there with one bill, and you won't have to worry about receiving all of these bills in the mail at one time, which was previously a problem.
Thank you, because I know you think of the average citizen or ratepayer here in the city of Birmingham, and I'm just thinking about how you would want to navigate knowing, what do I actually owe or what have I actually, my usage has been. So I'm looking forward to being able to utilize that information more readily, because it helps me as well. When I look and I see the, how much I've used, like especially during the summer months or what I'm doing, and it helps me to conserve as well as to budget.
Right, absolutely.
To be sure that I'm able to pay that. One other thing I wanted to ask about, as far as the public hearing for the budget, what is your fiscal year? Or when will we anticipate if you were to, can you walk us through the timeline?
Yep.
You've got the budget hearing. What, as a resident, I could expect as a timeline of when that action may take place?
Okay, so let's just start as tomorrow. So tomorrow is the second budget workshop, and there may be a couple more of those or maybe one more. So the next step would be the public hearing, which is November 9th at 5:30. After the public hearing, well, at the public hearing, the board would take public comment and take those comments back and then come back toward the end of November to vote on that proposed budget. The proposed budget would go into effect January 1st of 2023. So if there is a rate increase attached to that budget, that rate increase will be implemented January 1st. Mind you, the board is not voting on a rate increase. The board is voting on an operating and maintenance and capital budget. A rate increase may be attached to that budget because of the operating things that surround it. So, but that's the steps. We're going to have the public hearing, we'll take public comment, the board will come back at the end of November for a vote, and whatever that vote is, that budget goes into fiscal year 2023 starting January 1st.
Thank you very much. I'm glad you just mapped that out for us. Anything else, Dr. O'Quinn? Thank you so much, Mr. Jackson.
Thank you. I appreciate your time. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have AT&amp;T, Ms. Terry Williams. Hello.
Good afternoon, anyone, everyone. Thank you for having me here. Glad to see all of you. I wanted to, before I start talking about any type of AT&amp;T, well, it's kind of AT&amp;T, but it's Julius?
Yes.
Julian. Julian had mentioned, your question about a customer sees something, it may be a low line, a tree on it, any things like that. Y'all guys get those calls, and I work with India a lot. And she brings those things to me. And we have found a very good thing to help determine whose line it is.
All right.
Instead of, hey, AT&amp;T, Spectrum, Alabama Power, can y'all send somebody out there to identify it so it's just kind of in a pot until all of our crews go and identify? So I have found, if you just ask the resident to snap a picture, we can identify it just like that.
Very good.
So that's worked really well. And if not, we'll send somebody out there. I don't have a problem with that at all.
Well, that's very good, and that does help us with our see, click, fix options that we have in 311.
Okay.
So we're really trying to get most residents to start utilizing, we all have one or just about everybody, and we utilize it very readily. So thank you for reminding us of that, and that would be helpful to us. So if you're going to send that information to any council office, we'll take that in heed and want to be sure to get that message out to our residents. Thank you.
It works. I've done that across all my territories.
Touchdowns a lot of the time as well.
It does, because we don't want to take our crews away from doing repair work or what that may be if it's not ours. So we just, we'd love to identify it, and a picture is great.
Thank you.
Because sometimes I can't even tell by a picture, I have to send it to a network person. So I'll be honest with you guys there. AT&amp;T just continues to push forward with providing fiber upgrades and new placement of fiber to residents and homes. So I know y'all are all familiar with that type of construction. With that type of construction, and this is more on a national level, and I'll tune my Spectrum friend in on this conversation as well, but you've heard the term "build it and they will come." That's not always the case when it comes to broadband. And what, on a national level, and even organizations have formed around this, the matter to address broadband diversity and inclusion. And it's not that, even though we may bring it to a home, those residents may not see a benefit from having it. And it's just a divide. And one group that has sat with, here within the city, is Fuse. She's a fellow, and she works with diversity inclusion, and one of those topics is broadband. So what she has done and worked with in other areas as well as AT&amp;T on a national basis is education superhighway organization. They come build relationships with cities to let them know what this issue is and how cities can engage their residents to teach them all about devices or the Affordable Care Act, where you can get your billing if you qualify. It can sometimes be free. So, you know, we all have our different plans as providers that would allow things to be free, because sometimes the dollars are what is the obstacle to someone. But we all know the benefits of having for education and working at home and all those different types of things. So with that, those organizations are working kind of behind the scene, talking within the mayor's office soon, I hope, if she has, the representative has not already recommended something. But we, as providers, plan to join any efforts that the city puts forth in conducting classes, town hall meetings, just a way to inform, it's all, it's an awareness campaign is really all it is. And just teaching people about the dollar side and then the education side of broadband. So I'll let Robert speak to that from Spectrum, but I know that we're all on board to help promote anything that you and the city may have to help out.
Thank you very much. Thank you for that update. Dr. O'Quinn, do you have any questions?
Yeah, this is really a question for all of our telecommunications providers, including Alabama Power, which has fiber too. So in the infrastructure, you know, funding that's been allocated by Congress, you know, there's a lot of resources directed towards improving broadband access. And, you know, one of the issues, particularly here in the urbanized areas, that we have plenty of infrastructure, you know, but it's actually providing that not even last mile, it's the last few feet of the connection, helping, you know, households access that. But my point is, is that there's lots of federal funding out there to improve broadband access. And if conversations aren't happening already between the administration and all of our telecommunications providers, you know, I, just from a council perspective, as an advisor to the mayor, I would encourage you, you know, everyone to be sort of at the same table, trying to figure out, how do we go after some portion of that, those resources? You know, there, I can imagine from my non-professional perspective that there are projects, you know, that we can pursue to overcome barriers like, you know, public Wi-Fi access in public housing and, you know, city parks or something, you know, some projects along those lines. But I think we have a unique opportunity with the federal resources that have been allocated to, you know, go after that. And one of the other things that I've learned, you know, in having many conversations with folks at the federal level is they really want to see people working together, not just, you know, multi-jurisdictional, but also, you know, lots of different partners coming together to try and accomplish a goal. So we have lots of, you know, folks who operate in the telecommunications arena in the Birmingham metro area. And again, the federal resources are out there, so I would hope that, you know, we can figure out if there are any opportunities for us to, you know, bring some of that back to the city of Birmingham.
That's a great question, great background. Collaboration between providers and cities and counties and state is the way that this is going to happen in order to use those federal dollars. So I'll use that segue to mention, in the state of Alabama, let's just say we had a project and we picked Project A area, you know, ABC Park. And you wanted, the city wanted, out of their federal funding that they gained for broadband, they wanted to partner with, you know, AT&amp;T. And then we would put our dollars into, or whatever bidding process would go on, whoever, whatever that provider would be, would be putting in their dollars to build it. So there's some, that subsidy of those dollars. Right now, in the state of Alabama, we are unable to do that. There is law that is to be addressed on the November ballot that, at this point, it is not lawful for a city to give a private company money. So even if we wanted to do something right now, we could not. And we kind of ran into that all over the state and say, no, you can't be giving these people, AT&amp;T, Spectrum, CSPIRE, whoever, you cannot be giving dollars to. So if you're voting on November, you know, we support that you vote yes for that amendment because it will allow cities and counties to do these type of collaborations. And what that will do, Dr. O'Quinn, will actually move that needle even more, because that's more partners coming together. But right now, we can't, we are not able to utilize those dollars. So when that time happens and there's a lot of support, there are actually, Jefferson County, what's today, Wednesday? When do they have their meetings?
Tuesday. They had their meeting.
Their meeting today, yeah.
Okay. There, it's on their resolution this week, I mean, excuse me, it's on their agenda this week as a resolution to support that amendment, and it's amendment two. So when that is done, you know, there's going to be a lot of movement. Right now, a DECA, the state agency that got federal dollars to do broadband, you've seen where the governor has, through a bidding process, awarded grants throughout the state. Right now, it's working towards rural areas that do not have anything or some upgrades from basic DSL to fiber. So there's a lot of discussion. So we're, I am happy to sit down with anyone from y'all's group that wants to talk about those types of projects and areas. And if we can identify, then we, you know, there'll be a point where, you know, we'd come in and bid for those types of things.
Thank you. I think that'd be very beneficial. Just one last thing, appreciate the updates. I did want to give you an opportunity to just let residents know, we want to know about the success of your AT&amp;T, your pioneers program.
Yes.
And could you just tell residents about it? And I think you just had one recently.
We did. We had a milestone this past weekend. It was the 10th year of our Kids Spark. It is a education initiative that was actually started by one pioneer, Bell Rogers. I want to give her kudos, that it started in the Batwell with just a couple of students and then just grew and grew and grew over the past 10 years, all because of something she wanted to push within our volunteer organization at AT&amp;T. But it is a career-focused, where we bring parents and the students in at an early age so they can just explore all the different careers out there. So we have vendors that come and several different things that, at that age appropriate... So we have vendors that, that come and several different things that at that age appropriate time, pull the students away, talk about how they, to the parents about how scholarships work. So it's just an all-around really good and productive way to, to just move students forward and just start, starting to think. And I know at that time you don't really exactly know what you're going to do. I think I know a lot of seniors that go, I don't know what I'm going to do. But when you know as much as you can, that's what's so beneficial about it. So the group has done a great job organizing that.
Well, I thank you for that because I think, even though we say we may not know at the middle school or, you know, often we see some seniors that don't know what they want to do yet. You can go to college and think you know what you want to major in and we all know that can change. And so I'm one of those as well. But I do thank you, AT&amp;T, for this type of program to start that conversation early in the home among the parents and the students. We saw today we're bringing in a high defense, very highly technical organization into the city of Birmingham and they want to have residents that are prepared to take these are ninety-seven thousand dollar a year career jobs. So the sooner we get our children to thinking about these type of careers, the better it will be. So we thank AT&amp;T for doing that. Do you have something else, Dr. O'Quinn?
Yeah, I was wondering if you might talk for a moment about 5G expansion and kind of where that stands.
Yeah, we, I have a list every day of, we call it maintenance and upgrades where we're going to all, all the, the major towers in the area. And they may be just scheduled for maintenance, but they're, as, as we're there, because every time you climb a pole, every time you send a person out, there's dollars attached to it where they're getting 5G. So every day in the metro area, there's, there's one being worked. So if there is one in your area that would affect any of you, I would, I would reach out and say, what we, what we do is we try, because you have to turn it down in order to do the work on it, but we route to other towers in order for it to perform. So there may be hiccups in it, but they do, you know, it, it's, this is their window that they need to work in and move and, and go to the next. So if there are any type of degraded experiences on your phone, that would be it. But I don't, I don't have one right in the middle of Birmingham right now.
What, what about small cell installations?
We continue to fill holes with small cells, but it, at this point, it's really working on what we have right now to the 5G and cap, just capital expenses towards the end of the year. What are you doing with your dollars? But I will say that Birmingham, from AT&amp;T's perspective, got pretty much a load from the World Games. We prepared so much for that, it was just, all the small cells were in the areas that they needed to be. So you probably won't see too many more from us.
All right.
Well, thank you so much.
I've got one other thing that I forgot, Birmingham Public Library. Very fortunate yesterday, we have a community engagement group out of corporate that does all different types of programs and support. And the Birmingham library reached out to us for a contribution on a corporate level for a digital education class that they do with True Vine Evangelical, Evangel, I can't even talk today, church over in Engleknook?
Yes.
Yes. So yesterday I got to sit with the class and these are just people from, from the, the community learning how to turn on a computer, how to use a mouse. I even learned some things when I was there on a basic of how things talk to each other. But the, the program that the library is working is, is amazing. And what, what the partnership is, is it's a church, I believe, out of mountain or Brook, not Brookside area. Their church is, is working with True Vine and it all just kind of came together and then they got funding. So I was just there to, to meet a bunch of special, special people.
Well, as I said earlier, when we were getting, we're talking about how to know define this, we know how we are also dependent on technology these days. So I can't think there's not, never too much training that we can get. And sometimes it's just the small things that we don't know that we can utilize that can help this to be more effective. So in our computers, laptops and everything. So thank you.
That's good.
Thank you so much. Next we have, we'll just move right into the Spectrum and Mr. Robert Smith.
All right. Good afternoon.
Good afternoon.
And thank you for having, I've got a couple of things. I want to see where to get started. I want to go to, one of the things you mentioned, federal funding. There's, there are a couple of things, a lot of federal funding basically got hyper accelerated during and immediately following the pandemic. We found that throughout this country, we found out the haves and have-nots, the do and do-nots, and those that will and won't and didn't have because of education, telehealth and various other activities. So there've been two programs, one, and they're both federal. One was from the FCC called RDO, Rural Digital Opportunity Funding. And that was done by funding by census blocks to see where areas were that did not have service. And that was good and not quite as good because you take a census block, there could be one house in a corner of a block. If this were a census block, that could be one house right here that would have broadband and then this block would be deemed to be inaccessible and here's the rest of it with no activity. So there've been different mapping choices now. And there's another group, another program called B, Broadband Equity Access and Development Program. And they're doing a different version of mapping. It's more granular mapping, it's using more lines, more blocks, it's smaller areas so that we can identify what's really unserved and underserved. What the federal funds are basically saying, the first priority is going to be unders, I mean, unserved, where there's just no broadband, no fiber. And the next will be underserved. Now, here in the city of Birmingham, every address in the city of Birmingham has access to any and all services, whether it's from us, whether it's from AT&amp;T, and I know you've got other providers that have gained access, i.e. Verizon, Crown Castle, whatever. So everybody in the city of Birmingham has access to it. So a lot of the federal dollars, well, they may look to come this way, you may, there's some federal dollars available, but the largest sum that it's going to go to those areas that can identify unserved first, then shift to underserved. And a lot of it's based on speed and accuracy and things of that nature. So as the federal dollars come down, what will happen in Birmingham, it'll be used to improve the infrastructure that's already here. It can be used to make sure that amps are amped up and that new technologies can move things on a faster method. So just want us to know when the federal dollars come, they're going to look for unserved, then underserved, and then they'll work toward finding ways to access others. From a Spectrum standpoint, we're pretty proud of the fact that we are participating in the ACP program also. I spoke with Anita Lee, I know it's with the E, so with the C, as she told the mayor last week to, to say it properly. But we talked to her and we talked about some of the things they want to do and we're willing to assist just like AT&amp;T and anyone else because it's all about education. As I said, everybody has access to broadband and all of all the services in the city of Birmingham. That's not an address that doesn't have access to them. The key is, how do you educate a person to make it a priority? There are, if you got to make a choice, if you want to buy the most elaborate things but not buy the most needed things, then you got to make a priority of what's important in your house. And if the pandemic didn't show us anything else, it showed us that the use of broadband and technology really would shape our lives moving forward. Many of us probably work in manners now that we didn't prior to the pandemic. We can just get up in the morning, turn our laptop on, turn our phone on and we'll work. And in many cases, we're just as effective as we were driving eighteen, twenty miles to an office, being at work. So that has changed. And if, in order for houses to be effective, they need to be able to have those. So it's, it's an education to make sure that the adoption is there. We do want to say that we're participating in a program, the Affordable Connectivity Program. And as I sent you some information, you know, the thirty-dollar voucher is good. We've got a program that's $29.95, so that's a basic free program. And it does what you would need to have done for you. You will get your in-home Wi-Fi service, you got the free modem, the security suite to make sure you're not hacked and protected against outsiders trying to infiltrate it. It's a ninety-nine percent network reliability there. And you've also got no data caps and no contracts. So if you like it this month, don't like it next month, you're out. You don't have to worry about anything there. We do have the ability to provide a variety of services in this city. You can get a gig service if you need that type of service in your home. If you desire that much speed, we can give it to you. It's priced based on what your needs are, but it is available. We want to talk about what's available. We've got that. If, and anyone that has our Spectrum Internet product, and they qualify for ACP, we'll adjust the rate accordingly so that they're not penalized because of the new program. So we want, those things are there. We're just trying to make sure that we continue to make sure our networks are strong. You know, the more users we have, the more, we want to make sure that they work. We started one of the things, if I can find, I've got two pieces of paper here. We have one called our Spectrum One. Spectrum One is a new product that puts together three hundred megabit speed for your internet. It gives you Wi-Fi unlimited mobile line and for a price of $49.99. So that's a mobile phone, that's internet and Wi-Fi in the home. Now, if you get the ACP, you get all of that for nineteen dollars and ninety-nine cent if you, for those that qualify. And I know in a lot of our schools we've worked with, you got a lot of people who work because it's free lunch, you got SSI, you got a lot of other things that would qualify. So there are a lot of things that we're trying to do, just like everybody else. We're no different from anybody else that provides service. You want the best service to the people at the best price and that's what we're trying to do.
Well, thank you very much. Dr. O'Quinn, do you have any questions?
I think I'm good.
All right.
Thank you. I do thank you for bringing us this information. I love the way that you coined it when you started. I know there's been a lot of debate about whether or not broadband and the access is available, whether it's rural or urban. But as you said, it's, the accessibility is there. It's the option of educating residents as to what is important to you. So I appreciate that and making us aware of that because there's still a lot of talk about that.
I think Anita and her group will do a good job if the plans we talked about last week are implemented and executed properly. You know, educating groups, you know, Urban League, JCCO, county, school systems, you know, make sure that those groups can get the message out to those people that could utilize the service. I think they'd be very successful.
Oh, thank you so much.
All right. Hey, thank you for your time.
Appreciate this update. Thank you. Well, last but not least, we have Ms. Kimberly Adams with Crown Castle. Hello.
Kimberly Adams with Crown Castle. Nothing really new to report. We continue our small cell and fiber deployment in West Birmingham area as well as obviously maintaining and growing our fiber network and tower network and continuing to upgrade for 5G in the Birmingham area. So.
Thank you.
But glad to answer any questions about that.
Yes, I do, we want to thank you. Turn it over to Dr. O'Quinn, but I do want to thank you. I know that you have some new technology that you're using and you have allowed staff to come out and look at that. And so we appreciate the time you took to do that. Can you just talk about that just a little bit?
Sure. Just briefly, I mean, we're always looking at new technologies and new ways to deploy our technologies, of course. And with that, to add kind of the, to our toolkit on fiber deployment, we have a new way of deploying fiber where we don't go as deep. Now, this isn't a solution for a backbone type fiber deployment. This is really kind of more of a lateral application to support our small cell nodes. But it's certainly something we're very excited about that is not, is kind of intrusive in a, in a traditional underground boring sense. So, but, but glad to, I'm not the expert on it, certainly, but, but we did enjoy having Mr. McDaniel out to see our trial that we did in Vestavia Hills on that. And in fact, we're approved and moving forward in Vestavia Hills. So we're very excited about that.
Well, we'd be very excited about that. I know as we undertake different paving and road construction and trying to upgrade our roads, we, we invested seventeen million dollars in this for our fiscal year. So it's always frustrating to residents for any of the utilities there that are present today, when we go in and we fix those roads and then you have to come out and do a patch. We know there's maintenance and work that has to be done, but any type of technology that can help us with that and improving that and minimizing the disruption and the repair that's needed later, we appreciate that.
Thank you.
So we're looking forward to that technology being coming available. Dr. O'Quinn?
Yeah, can you, what geography is Crown Castle working in, in, in the county, just in general, like not necessarily just in Birmingham, but?
Of course. Well, traditionally Crown Castle, just to kind of back it up and give a little history, we are a tower company. So traditionally our network in Birmingham truly, truly was a tower infrastructure that are multi-tenant towers that we then provide to our carrier clients. So your AT&amp;Ts, your T-Mobiles, your Verizon, in, in the past Sprint, of course, as well as other smaller providers or different technologies or even jurisdictions for, for emergency antennas or whatever their needs may be. We also now own fiber in Birmingham through, originally through a purchase of a fiber company that was already here. But we have greatly added to that throughout Birmingham. So actually we're, we're all around the Civic Center, BJCC, into West Birmingham, then to the south, Mountain Brook, on down to Shelby County. So pretty, pretty significant network of small cell fiber and of course towers. So, and the, the bay, what we, we're a little different than a Spectrum or an AT&amp;T is we provide the infrastructure to the provider, but we're not like an in-home service provider. So we're a multi-tenant infrastructure provider.
Yeah. Okay. This is sort of an offhand question. So recently it came to my awareness that there's some online mapping tools that are available to, to show broadband coverage. And however, I think it was kind of spoke to earlier, you know, depending on how you map things, you know, if there's one customer who has access in a, you know, census district or whatever, you know, however the, it's broken down, then that might qualify as coverage. So, you know, we recently met with our federal lobbyist in DC and, you know, part of my inquiry about this is, is prompted by their discussion of, you know, the federal resources that are available. And one of the things that they specifically talked about is that some of the maps that are out there, the accuracy is questionable. And so they were really encouraging us as a city government to do some assessment of our own, you know, to document, you know, where, where fiber is, where it's not, and, you know, things of that nature. Again, you know, all of this is kind of aimed at the broadband access situation and, you know, I don't, I don't think the city of Birmingham owns any fiber. I mean, pretty much, you know, our telecommunications system here is pretty much all private sector that I'm aware of. So that's, but that's not the case in some, some places, you know, some municipalities have, that's one of their utilities. But in any case, can you kind of speak to the, the accuracy of, you know, But in any case, can you kind of speak to the accuracy of, you know, the mapping and?
So I think traditionally, the FCC used to keep a mapping system where what you alluded to was if, and they, they did it by census block, and if there was an area in that census block that did have service, then that whole census block was then shaded as being a well-served type community. I think that's probably been in the spotlight as being an error for quite some time now. And certain states, I covered Georgia as well, and Alabama have actually realized that and gone through their own mapping process to correct that and update that. Now, I think the FCC is also working on that as well. But I think Alabama just launched their, you know, they've been working on it for several years now, the state of Alabama, and they just launched it, I think through a DECA in the last month. So they've actually, I think, done the hard work to go back through and really analyze each area for what service providers are out there, then to define them as, you know, whether they're underserved, unserved, or well-served, so.
Yeah, good to hear.
Thank you so much. We appreciate this update, and we look forward to any additional information you could share with us again about how we're moving just a little bit further with the fiber and getting that laid all out.
Thank you.
Within the thing. So thank you so much.
Thank you.
All right. Well, thank you all so much. We have really appreciated all of the updates today. Our next utilities meeting is scheduled for Tuesday, November 15th, at 2 o'clock in the council chambers. Any items that will be submitted need to be submitted by 12 noon on Friday, November 11th. And so at this time, council, I'll ask for motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
Second, all in favor?
Aye.
Thank you so much. This meeting is adjourned. Thank you all so much.
Good questions. I know.